Good evening, Board members. Good evening, families. This evening, we have the wonderful opportunity to hear a song from some of our second graders who exhibit the Falcon Five here at Ringing Rocks. At Ringing Rocks, part of our school-wide positive behavior plan is to follow what is called the Falcon Five: to be caring, to be safe, to be kind and respectful, and to be ready for our school each and every day, to work hard and be prepared. And these students have been selected by their teachers as exemplifying the Falcon Five. We've begun a new tradition here at Ringing Rocks. We've recently begun singing the Falcon Five on Friday mornings as a school, and the children who were chosen to sing that song are children who, that week, have earned a golden ticket. Golden tickets are given out by staff members when students are exemplifying the Falcon Five. So this is one more way we acknowledge and celebrate the wonderful citizenship of our students. And, parents, I want to thank you for bringing them, and we know that it is because of your contributions, we have such wonderful students. So, thank you.
Be here, be ready, be safe and respectful too. Be caring, treat others like you wish they'd be you. Celebrate success, celebrate success. Ringing Rocks gets better when we all do our best. Listen to your teachers, follow the rules. This is how we make a better school. This is how we make a better school.
Just tonight, if we could follow the three-minute rule on public comment, and also when you come to the microphone, so you can state your name and address.
Scott Fulmer, 2378 Christina Court, Lower Potts Grove. Seems like a lot of people want to comment on Facebook, but when it's time to come face-to-face, no one in this community comes out. So I'm going to address the white elephant in the room tonight. So, good evening. As elected officials, you take an oath to go into this office, and one of these oaths is ethics. And this oath has been broken. All right? Someone, one of the nine of your board members leaked the report to the media. All right? Whoever leaked this report should stand up and resign immediately. If you're on the ballot for reelection, you should dismiss yourself from the ballot. You should not be on this board. You've lost all credibility in the community. You're in the midst of negotiating a teacher contract right now. How are the teachers going to negotiate fairly when they have a fear of something that may be leaked out to the press? Or a parent, something about their child's confidentiality could be leaked to the press? Was this the first time? Was it the last time? You have no credibility left. So, I urge for the betterment of this community, whoever resigned, whoever did this, whether it be intentional or unintentional, you need to stand up and be accountable for, and resign immediately. And, Mr. President, I hope you do not excuse this meeting until someone does tonight. Thank you.
Do need to announce our executive sessions. On March 18th, the Board did meet for an executive session. This was mistakenly omitted by myself and the rest of the Board at the March 24th meeting. On April 7th, the Board met for an executive session to discuss personnel, and tonight, the Board met again for an executive session to discuss personnel. With that, we will move on to an approval of the minutes from our last meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? We also have a motion that we approve the monthly Board workshop minutes from March 24th, 2015. Motion to second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Receiving of the accounts for audit.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, the middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
Motion to second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $5,82,167.88 for March 2015 as presented.
Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the Treasury report for March 2015 as presented and file it for audit.
Motion to second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Report of the superintendent.
I recommend that you approve the administrative staff items as submitted.
Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
And I also wanted to congratulate Kate Pacito, who's in the audience this evening as our new supervisor of special education. If we could give her a round of applause. I recommend that you approve the professional staff items as submitted.
Motion to second. All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the support staff items as submitted.
So moved.
Any questions from anyone? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the supplemental special payments as submitted.
All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the student-teacher assignments as submitted.
Any questions from anyone? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the miscellaneous item as submitted.
Motion to second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Justin, as we finish up personnel, I just wanted to make a comment on number 2A. As the year goes on, it seems like every month, we have more amazing teachers that are retiring this year, and some of the ones that we approved tonight have personally taught my kids and touched their lives. And I just wanted to say how much I appreciate these teachers, and all of those in Potts Grove School District, but especially these teachers who are retiring for all of the years of service that they gave.
You stole my thunder. I was going to mention Nancy Albright specifically, only because she had my son in the second grade, and I also happen to know that she had one of my neighbors when she was a girl, and she has kids the same age as mine. So Nancy has been with this district, I don't even know how many years, and I assume Shelley will be giving her the appropriate kudos at a later date, but I just wanted to speak for her and for all these teachers, as you did. It's sad to see such wonderful teachers leaving our district.
And I'd like to just piggyback on that, because all but one, other than Sharon, had my son, I know for sure, and he's 27. So you've been around a long time, and all you've given to all of our children, we all wish you very well.
I'll just comment, because everybody else has given everybody else kudos except for Sharon, but I'll give Sharon kudos, especially because Sharon Bradbury taught two of my children and made it easy for my oldest to go to kindergarten.
Moving on to business, I recommend that you approve the budget transfers for March 2015 as presented.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize the administration to execute an agreement with Personal Health Care Incorporated as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with New Story as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the change order GC018 for repair and replacement of the terrazzo flooring at the Potts Grove High School as presented.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments?
Can we have an explanation for this one?
Dave, do you want to do it, or do you want me?
There are two areas in the high school that have elevation changes. One, outside the library, where there are some steps that go up, and the other, in the 400 wing, as you come in from the loading dock and go down towards what's the new art rooms. And there is some deterioration at the base of these areas, and in order to replace it, it's not just a small patch, but it's going to be a replacement of the length of the incline or the edge of the steps. So, there may be some other patching throughout the building. We have a unit cost for that, but these are two larger areas that needed to be addressed as part of the project.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the payment for the invoices listed above for the high school construction project.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the payment of invoices listed above for the middle school cooling tower project.
So moved. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the conference attendance as presented.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Moving on to discussion items? I indicated in the packet over the weekend that I wanted to just give you a budget update and remind you that the administration's been working very diligently to look at the current budget and see where we can make an impact. And as I explained to you at the March 24th committee meeting, that we're currently at an $841,000 deficit at the index of 2.4%, and we were beginning to identify the possible cuts. And during this conversation, I told you a couple of things. One, that we would be monitoring the retirements of staff and resignations, as well as reviewing course enrollments at our secondary schools, and class size in comparison to staff. And I would like to review some of the findings that we found, understanding that in order to close an $841,000 deficit and beyond, should the Board decide to pass a budget lower than 2.4%, we need to really look at the high-budget items, which include personnel. So at this point, we've confirmed that we have seven retirements, and the savings, if we replace all of the positions, the savings that's garnered from those retirements constitutes $277,521 in a reduction, because we are hiring teachers at a lesser amount than those teachers that are retiring, so thus, that is the savings. Then, just recently, we've been reviewing all of the high school course enrollments to determine whether we have the enrollment numbers to run certain courses. And this year, that we found that the encore courses have dropped significantly in certain areas due to some unintended consequences. One of those consequences is that of the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center. We have a new director. He's been doing a very amicable job trying to market and recruit students for the Western Center, and thus, we're looking at enrollment projections that are much increased over last year for the center. But if the students go to the center for their encore courses because they're involved in a program, then they're not here in our high school for encore courses. And when I say encore, I mean elective courses. So essentially, if they attend the Western Center, they're just taking their science, their mathematics, their language arts, and in some cases, their social studies. At the Potts Grove High School, they take their other course requirements at the Western Center. That has caused us a significant reduction in those courses that we offer at our high school. Coupled with the fact, and just to give you some data on that, we've increased by about 29 students to date for levels 2 and 3. And the other thing that he did this year is the JOC, the Joint Operating Committee, which is comprised of three of our board members, three board members from Springford and three board members from Upper Perk, authorized to allow ninth graders to attend the Western Center. So he started the marketing of ninth graders. Now, we've been very selective on which ninth graders we would think would be strong candidates, because we would hate to see a child go to the Western Center and really not transition well, and then have to come back to the homeschool. We really want them to be a strong enough student to be able to handle that, because they really don't have any support once they decide to attend Western, because they're essentially at Western all day, except for those courses that I mentioned previously. So that being said, we currently have 12 students that are slated to go from the ninth-grade program. Additionally, in order to offer more of our students opportunities to take courses at the community college, we are currently enabling 25 students to go to the community college in lieu of taking first and second period at Potts Grove High School. So those students are opting to take their elective courses at a community college, but thus, they're not in our elective courses. Lastly, we've tried to increase our AP student offerings and our honors courses, and we've tried to change the requirements so that we're enabling more students opportunities, and we're not preventing them from the ability to, or the opportunity, rather, to take an AP course or an honors course. Thus, we have more students that are actually stepping up to the plate and wanting to take that on, and so we have more students that are taking those courses as electives. So in other words, they might be doubling up on a science, a mathematics, or even a language arts, you know, a social studies, and taking two, but the second one that they take is obviously their elective course, and they're doing that in lieu of other courses. So that has resulted in a significant decline in enrollment, and we're proposing the consideration of the following reductions. We currently have only the need right now to staff two of the three art teachers, two of the three art teachers in the high school. In other words, we only have enough courses to run, we only have enough enrollment to fill the schedule of two teachers. We only have enough enrollment to fill the schedule of a .5 choir teacher. Now, that teacher is retiring, so we're recommending that we only hire a .5 choir teacher until such time that we need a full-time choir teacher. And at this point, we only have the need for half of that. Both of those things will garner us the savings of the art, $122,649, the choir, $38,833, and that's the additional savings over not replacing the teacher, because prior, I told you, when teachers retire, there's a savings if we replace them. The $38,833 is additional savings. Additionally, we currently do not have enough business courses signed up to run two business teachers, and we only need 1.5 business teachers. That would be a savings of about $30,159 if we had a .5 less of a teacher. Our elementary enrollments are also attached for your review in your packet, at least I think they are. We continue to monitor those numbers. At present, it looks like we can move one kindergarten to second grade at West, because there's shifting enrollment from kindergarten to second grade, and you can see on that handout that, and I just circled a name, but it's not the person that we would move, obviously, that's just a placeholder, but we would move a teacher from kindergarten to second grade. That would level out the enrollments at West Potts Grove to 19 at the kindergarten, 22 at the first grade, and 20 at the second grade. Additionally, we currently have enrollment numbers at Ringing Rocks of 17 kinder, 22 first, which is the same as West, and currently, 17.5 at second grade, and we're suggesting that you consider not replacing one of the second-grade teachers, and that would bring the enrollment number to 20, which is still at the same number that you have at West Potts Grove. Now, obviously, we monitor these numbers very carefully over the spring and summer, but we have to look at where we could possibly garner savings. And that is also a significant savings in addition to the retirement. The additional savings is $77,666. The next thing I wanted to bring to your attention is the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center budget. I was speaking to Mr. Davis earlier this evening, and it's my understanding that the budget needs to be voted on among all of the board members of the three sending districts. So it's not the board members that sit on the JOC, it's rather a vote of all of the board members of the three sending districts, and you have to have, correct me, Mark, if I'm wrong, 14...
The distinction I drew, just to elaborate very quickly, is that, and I sometimes lose sight of this, that there's a distinction between the Joint Operating Committee, which is the nine members, three from each district, that chair or head the, govern the tech center, but the Western Montgomery County Center. But certain items have to be voted on by the vocational technical board, and that is actually all the board members of the sending districts. So where we got to 14 is there's three districts, nine members each, makes 27, and even in my rudimentary math, and I'm going to check with you, 14 should be a majority.
Okay.
Am I right?
Is that right, Chloe? Let's check with Chloe. Thank you. And just to piggyback on that, each district has a portion that they pay. So they pay a portion based on the average ADM, rolling ADM over five years. So our portion is 29.66%, so we pay that portion of the overall budget. So we've been scouring through this budget. We had three superintendents, three business managers, the administrative director, looking at the budget at the Western Center. And at this point, the administrative director is asking for an additional half of a teacher in dental, because his enrollment numbers have gone up, and he's also asking for an additional full-time teacher in protective services. When we had discussions with the superintendents and the business managers, we suggested that we either try to grow our program slowly, or we look for savings in other ways, so that the addition of staff doesn't adversely impact the homeschool districts. I made the recommendation, which was backed by the other two superintendents, because I sit as the superintendent of record for the Western Center, that we consider not filling the SRO position, or not rehiring, rather, the SRO position, which was a cost, is a cost to the Western Center of over $67,000. Our savings to that would be about $30,460. That's our portion. I also made the recommendation, and the other superintendents concurred, that we consider, if we do expand the protective services course, and we add a second teacher, that we really only add a half of a teacher, because there are 20 students currently enrolled in the morning, and there are 58 students enrolled in the afternoon, because the way the Western Center works is the ninth and 10th graders, currently 10th, but soon to be ninth and 10th, they attend in the morning. The 11th and 12th graders attend levels 2 and 3 in the afternoon. And when we don't have enough enrollment, we lump it together, and we either run a morning program or an afternoon program. So sometimes, when you've seen a half of a program, it's because our enrollments were such that we couldn't run two separate halves, so we just ran a morning or an afternoon, and a junior could attend in the morning or vice versa. At this point, he's suggesting that we hire a full-time teacher for the 20 and the 58, so in essence, there'll be 10 students in the morning in each section, and 58 students divided by the two teachers in the afternoon, however, that breaks down. And that is his proposal on the table. The current proposal on the table is an impact of 5.7, it's a 5.71% budget increase, and additional $310,000 to the budget over last year. And thus, that's why, you know, the administration is questioning how much we want to grow the program, and I think it's a philosophical conversation as well, because, as you can see, there are some unintended consequences to growing that program versus, you know, our homeschool program and what happens to that. You want to be careful that you're balancing that program, and that the program is the right fit for students, because not all cases is the Western Center probably the right fit for students, but in some cases, it's a very good program for students, and that's why we've always supported that program. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, and if you have other considerations in that area, I know that budget will be on the Board for approval next month, but it's my understanding, as Mark said, that we have to get the input and the approval of all of you as board members as well, so we can come back and discuss it at the next meeting, if you want.
Yeah, I mean, I think where it's headed, and what we've traditionally done, and is not prescribed by law or Article of the Agreement, is the JOC will hopefully pass a budget or recommend a budget next month, and then that will be sent back to the homeschools. At this point, as Ms. Fieldall has indicated, there's been some discussion. We don't have a final, what I'll call, proposal or a budget recommended by the JOC. We're expecting that the first Monday in May, I guess, at our meeting, and then I would think you would take it up either at one of your two meetings.
So before May? Mark? Before May, they should take it up, or after it's presented at the Western?
Because at this point, we have nothing to vote on. Now, I mean, you may all have commented as to what you would like to see your representatives do, based on Shelley's presentation, or what you'd like to see happen.
But it is my understanding that last night, they did make the, it was last night's evening, they did make the presentation for the budget with a full-time protective services individual and with the SRO position still intact.
That's why you may want to comment.
In that budget.
But in the end, I mean, you and I talked about it earlier, I'm not sure that's what the JOC is going to ultimately recommend. I mean, it was hard to discern last night where it was headed.
Does any, do any JOC members want to chime in as to what they heard?
We didn't not have three JOC members, and that's one of the reasons I think they wanted an input from nine, but that's where we are. And that clearly is, you're right, that was the proposal, but there was some discussion that people disagreed with that proposal, so that's why I'm suggesting that, you know, you don't have anything formally due tonight, but certainly, if you have direction for your board members, they ought to hear it, I think.
Then, I'll finish my direction at this point, and I put it in your report, but I wanted to make sure I explained it better, was to consider either refraining from hiring the protective services position for one year and limiting the expansion of the program, because we already have one teacher there. This would be two teachers, and I don't even, there's only a couple other programs that have two teachers. We have cosmetology, culinary arts, and one of the mechanical areas, I think it's auto, yeah. So some of the programs don't even have two teachers, some just have a half of teacher. So consider that, or perhaps consider only adding a half of protective services, and in order to recoup the And in order to recoup the difference, to consider not, not filling the S R O position. And I tried to explain to the J O C board last evening that there are about two hundred and fifty to three hundred, as slated for next year, students there at a given time. So in the morning, you have three hundred, or at least this is projected number for, for next year. This year, we have about two fifty. Next year, projected three hundred, and in the afternoon, projected three hundred. You have an administrative director, and you have a building principal. So there are two administrators for three hundred students. We have elementary schools that have more students than that with one building principal and a lot of little guys to worry about. And, you know, they're doing the administrative job of, of, you know, of a, a lot more than, than two people. Now granted, the executive director has other responsibilities, such as marketing the program, which he's done a very nice job with. But, you know, it doesn't mean to say that he can't pitch in on the other end. It doesn't mean to say that one principal can't handle three hundred students at a time. So that, that was why we made that direct, that directive. And just to summarize this, if we were to accept all of the personnel reductions in the district that I mentioned and went through, that comes to a total of five hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And if we were also to consider some of the suggestions for the Western Center, we could save an additional thirty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And that amounts to no S R O with a half of protective services position. If you did no S R O with no protective services position, that's probably an additional, I think fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars. I'd have to look at my notes. So our combined totals with the personnel in the home district and the no S R O with a half of protective services is a savings to the district of five hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, which does significantly close our deficit that is currently sitting at eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So if you have questions or you would like to discuss this further, I would be happy to try to answer them, or Dave can help me.
Okay, so whenever you talked about the budget increase, you gave us a number, the budget increase for the Western Center. That is split between the three sending schools, is that correct? Okay, so that's not just our?
The increase I gave you is an overall increase. Actually, I should have brought that budget with me. The increase to Pots Grove is five point seven-one percent. The increase to Springford and Upper Perk is like fourteen, fourteen percent, if I remember correctly from last night. There, because they're sending more students than we send, so their budget's actually even being more adversely impacted.
Okay. So my other question was just clarifying here because there were a lot of positions and things like that. So the reduction in the one art teacher, is that just reducing the number of sections or is that actually, actually reducing classes?
We only have enough sections to give two employees a full schedule. So it would be like a third schedule would, there's nothing to put on the schedule.
Right. What, what I'm saying is like, for example, they have, you know, drawing and painting and A P studio art and things like that. Are we taking out, are we reducing a class? Like are, are we eliminating textiles? Or are we just saying we're only going to have two sections or one section of studio art instead of two sections of studio art? Do you understand that?
We might be combining, I can't give you the exact, I have the, the information here, but we might have to combine a couple of sections. Like sometimes we have an A P section of something and a, a, a two level. And if you only have three students in the A P and five in the two, you know, you combine them. So that's what we've been doing, is scouring the numbers. But even combining them and, and, and filling the classes and making sure that we have enough, there's still only enough sections to fill two, two full-time schedules at this point.
I just wanted to make sure it was, because I understand that, you know, A P to studio art and studio art can be combined easily without reducing the program.
Right.
But if you're going to redo, or if you're going to like cut painting altogether, that's, you know, that has another impact. Okay. So then the other question that I had was on the choir, and I know Ms. Faust is retiring this year. And you said we have a point five choir teacher. And I understand that, you know, we, we have a hard time, when you get to high school, you have to pick. You can't be in anything, everything anymore. So my question with that is, for the point five choir teacher, would that be a new hire or would we use existing personnel, like current staff, and fill up their schedules?
We're suggesting that we hire, we, we replace the full-time teacher with a point five. So Mrs. Faust is retiring, so we hire a point five. And then we wait and see what happens with the course enrollments moving forward in future years.
Right.
Because we just don't have the enrollment this year.
Okay. And then my other question is, I can't remember, I know with the marching band, there's, there's a supplemental that goes along with that?
There, there's supplementals for almost all of those different things. The choir, you know, doing the, the choir performances, the different types of performances. There's numerous supplementals that they get for that. Has nothing to do with the, the courses itself.
Right. Would we retain that supplemental position?
Yes, absolutely.
I have just a couple. One question is the estimated savings on retirements, and I recognize that that's really an estimate, or maybe it's not.
Well, it's estimated, it's estimated in that you, we have a replacement cost that we use, that we, we come up with a figure for a master's three. So whatever that cost is for a master's three, which is eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, that's what we consider our replacement cost.
So assuming you?
So sometimes we hire a bachelor's one, but sometimes we might hire even beyond that. So it averages out to, so we use a master's three.
Well, that, that, that speaks to where my main question was, which was specific to, to one of the retiring teachers and a personal belief that an entry level wouldn't be a great idea.
Yeah, we, we always hire the very best teacher, and we consider, obviously, the years of experience, but we want to make sure that we're getting a quality teacher in front of our students.
Of course. And then, when I went through this the first time and listening to you the second time, what I liked about your plan was how you're, you've managed to come up with cuts that don't actually affect existing staff. We've got a, 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 at least not in the short term, but there's one exception to that, and that's the business teachers. So I was wondering if you could speak to?
Well, right now, you know, this is really a personnel discussion, so we should probably have that part in, in executive session.
Sure.
But in concept, one of the teachers wouldn't be needed full-time, it would be a point five. And additionally, we thought one of the art teachers that, we thought one of the district art teachers was going to be on an unpaid leave of absence all of next year, but Dr. Shirk clarified today that they're not on leave of absence. So we would have to consider and look at our art department. And that could mean that two art teachers are reduced from one point zero to point five in order to make up this. And again, we can have that conversation.
Were there any other questions, comments? The S R O at the Western, is it an officer of a neighboring district?
No, it's, he's actually a retired, I believe, a retired police officer. He's not a, he's not an active police officer. He's just a miscellaneous retired police officer who, it's my understanding, may also pursue the protective services piece. You know, he's, he can teach. He's, he's a certified teacher.
Okay.
If I can just piggyback on that, because we did have our meeting, and I have it in front of me. Just so everybody knows, Springford has two hundred and fifty-nine students attending the Western Center. Upper Perk has a hundred and seventy-nine, and we have a hundred and sixty-nine of our students.
Actually, Patty, when I saw that last night, I think that that would, there was a typo on that because when, when you went over it with the superintendents prior, that number was incorrect, and he did not fix it when he presented it last evening. So we're actually higher than that. So is Upper Perk, though. I, I can get you the exact.
There's the five hundred and ninety-eight students together?
That's, that's the projected, yeah, projected.
Oh, projected, okay.
For next year.
Okay.
Mr. Slomak, you had a question?
Thanks, Mr. President. Shelley?
Quick questions. Have you talked with the other sending superintendents about your proposals and gotten any reaction from them?
We meet monthly with the, the administrative director, the, the three superintendents and the administrative director, and we've all had conversation. And all three of the superintendents recommended that we consider not filling the S R O position and whether or not we needed the protective services. I think, I know Springford would like to see us add at least the point five protective services because they have the most students that are interested in the program. I think the Upper Perk superintendent and myself have the same feeling that we have budget deficits that are pretty significant. So, you know, we're looking very closely at everything in our budget and trying to figure out, you know, how we can close this budget gap and, and, and pass the budget. Not that we wouldn't, in a perfect world, like all of these things, to stay exactly as they are because we certainly would.
And do you have any sense as to whether the other sending districts are affected by their class numbers the way that you tell us we've been affected?
No, I brought that to their attention through an email correspondence because that, we just be, you know, we just were scouring through, and, and I know that the Upper Perk superintendent is going to be reviewing that as well. Not so sure it has such an impact on Springford because they're so much larger than we are. But I haven't had a specific conversation, but I, I intend to speak with them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Moving on to our represent, board representative, student representative, Ms. Klaus.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm going to be giving some updates on each of the schools, some current events. So I'll start with Ringing Rocks. Students are participating in after-school clubs that are held on Tuesdays. The Falcon Fitness Club was added, and members are training for the P G Ed Foundation's five K. And there's also a karate club that's sponsored by the Wellness Grant. So if there are any Ringing Rock students in need of after-school help, there's going to be reading support on Mondays and math support on Wednesdays. In West Pots Grove, they held the Jump Rope for Heart during gym class, and students raised two thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars for the American Heart Association. And for this, the West Pots Grove is receiving new gym and health equipment. Also, there is going to be an Australian-themed art show taking place Thursday, May twenty-first, and first-grade students are going to be doing research projects on Australian animals. Moving on to Lower Pots Grove, students are preparing for the P S S As. Fourth-grade students participated in a science explorers lesson in class. And this science lesson was funded by a grant from T E V A Pharmaceuticals and was a great experience for students and staff. Student leaders have been encouraging students to do their best for the P S S As, but also encouraging them to not become stressed about them. To kind of relax, like a relaxation for the students, there's going to be a Japanese drummer ceremony on April thirtieth. And on May first will be the Spring Fling, and Mr. Seiler will be in the Dunk Tank. In the middle school, they are preparing for the P S S As as well. Assemblies are being held to talk about key ideas and to celebrate the effort of students and teachers. Also in the middle school is the discussion of the school-wide positive behavior system, which reinforces the Falcon Four of being safe, positive, respectful, and responsible. At the middle school, Pots Grove High School students will be performing an anti-bullying play that relates to these themes. With the digital learning environment, students and teachers have created things through digital video and iBooks, and these programs have really enhanced learning in the classroom. At the middle school, there will be an art show, and they will be showing a summary of an artist's work through time-lapse video. And on the same evening will be an Oscar night, which highlights the digital product, products of students. And I have the date for that, just let me find it. That's May twenty-first. So moving on to the high school, we recently had the production of The Sound of Music, and that was from March nineteenth to the twenty-first, and that went really, really well. There are going to be two assemblies and a parent night on April twenty-third for Rachel's Challenge, which is a nonprofit organization that looks for continual improvement for schools so that they may bring out the inner learner in every child. It motivates and equips students to start a chain reaction of kindness and compassion. And also on April twenty-fifth, there will be prom. So on a different note, during this week and even today, some of my classes have been discussing current events regarding the school board. But the important thing is that through this discussion, it's really come to my attention just how much students want to be involved in the decisions made by the school board. And I have heard directly from students that they really would like to have a say in things that control their education and really impact their school. And students believe that they are equipped and capable of making strong decisions, and I believe that they are too. Thank you.
Thank you. New business?
First of all, I just wanted to, to just read to you a letter that we received from Mr. Ed Wagner that, to the, to the Pots Grove softball that said, "On behalf of Lower Pots Grove Township Park and Recreation Commission, I would like to thank you for volunteering to assist with our annual Easter egg hunt. We had a wonderful day, and it appeared that everyone thoroughly enjoyed themselves. And we appreciate your commitment to the township and your help in one, in making one of these a great success." So thank you to the softball teams that were involved in this event, in this community event.
Any other new business tonight?
I have one thing. I promised I would bring this up. It's actually two-part now because I forgot about the Dunk Tank. So the Spring Fling is May first, and that's in the evening. Does anybody in the audience know if it starts after school or is it during school?
It is after school. It is in the evening. I believe five, Mr. Seiler, I don't know if you know, I think it's five-thirty?
Well?
Until eight-thirty, but it is in the evening.
Well, then I volunteer to make it the second annual Dunk the Board Member Dunk Tank as well and, and stand alongside of Mr. Seiler. And along those lines, I wanted to speak about a serious pro, potential issue we have with our P T As in, in the Pots Groves. We have two P T As that do not have volunteers to step up and be presidents. Our Lower Pots Grove P T A and our middle school P T A are both in the situation where if somebody does not step up by a date in May, I think it's the third week, then the P T As will dissolve, and the funds that they've raised will go to the, to the state or national P T A. This is an extremely serious situation. There are some complexities to it and some questions that have come up in social media about whether or not somebody from, say, the Rocks P T A would be eligible to take that officer position, and it depends on the bylaws. And I don't want to get into that right now. I've just wanted to publicly say, we need somebody in Pots Grove to step up to these two most important positions on behalf of our kids. We, we simply cannot allow these P T As to dissolve. And I dunk.
Any other new business?
Justin, I would just like to also add another promo to something that Chloe mentioned with Falcon Fitness Group here at Ringing Rocks. They're trying to get this group of children interested in running, and we're hoping that they come out to support the Education Foundation five K Run, which is on Saturday, May sixteenth, starting at nine o'clock. It would be great if we could have a big group of runners because we try to pull this off every year, and we have a, I will be running. Oh, yeah, I run, yeah. So you can walk if you'd like, but the, the entry form was posted, I believe, it's up on our website, but it was also, it came out through the. but it was also, it came out through the email blast also. But if anybody has any questions, let me know. So, May, Saturday, May 16th, 9:00 a.m. here at the high school. It's, it's not a bad course.
Any other new business? Not hearing any. I just want to say, tonight, it's been a rough couple of weeks at the district and the board. I want to reiterate our commitment and support 100% to this community and to our staff and every district employee, that they have our support from this board. And a lot of things have transpired, things that we won't go into. The sad part of the whole narrative is that we've been talking about everything but our kids, our students. And what a lesson we learned from the Falcon Five tonight, from the kids that were here, to be safe, be responsible, be caring, be here, be ready, and celebrate success. Well, the successful thing tonight is our kids. And I just want to end on that note. Be respectful is huge. Be safe. Be caring. And...
One more.
One more what?
Comments.
One more comment. Okay. I was in my preacher clothes. You know, I'm a preacher, so we get to our big clothes. Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
Just going along with Justin's comments, I know we've, we've all been embroiled in a controversy for the last couple of weeks, and, and there's been a lot of finger pointing. And the finger goes here. Back a month ago, I think it was April 10th or 11th or something like that, I was desperate for signatures for my petition, and I stopped into the administration office and got help from the administration to contact some staff. And I proceeded to visit a number of the school buildings to get signatures for my petition. While there might not be a law that was broken or a specific policy that was violated, it was still an ethical breach, for which I regret. And it caused a cascade of events that involved a lot of people. In the office there at the administration, Lori, Dr. Ramage. I went over to the middle school. I was sitting, waiting in the office to, to meet with the teacher when they got off, out of class, and he saw me sitting there. He asked me what I was doing there. I said, "I, I'm desperate. I need some signatures." And he offered to take me to their, I had a list of some, some possible signatures, and he escorted me around. I didn't know my way around through the building. Dr. Ramage, sorry for sucking you into this, but will you forgive me? So, what I did is just created a whole bad thing for the district, for the board. We want to be ethical and above-board in our behavior, and I missed the mark there. So, I asked the board for forgiveness, administration, Shelley, sorry, and the community. We want to do right. We want to act right and be right. So, I apologize for starting this whole ball of fire, and I hope we can somehow put it to rest. Oh, and there were some teachers that felt intimidated or offended, and I, I'm sorry. I apologize if I did that. I'm sorry. Did I miss anybody? All right. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Kofelt, and that took a lot of courage in taking ownership and responsibility, and those says a lot. I think that's all we're going to say. And with that, we're going to make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor?
All right. Have a good night, everyone.